It appears that those actions were taken with a purpose. Obviously, it's our goal here in the city to make sure that we have businesses that are operating to the highest standard. And there was something that you had said earlier about the employees and trying to differentiate the owner of the business from the employees. And I think that when we deal with liquor license violations, it's a very similar situation in terms of an employer needing to take responsibility for the business and the employees. So that's my thoughts in terms of making a determination today. If the council is willing to consider an adjournment because additional information is needed, I would consider that. But based on the information that we have today, I'm comfortable going forward. That's my two cents, which was more than two cents, so I apologize.
Let's go for the vote, please.
Yeah, we should go for the vote. Thank you very much for your contribution this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. I just have one final note, that what the citizens of Troy will find out during this investigation and as we move forward...
Point of order. Point of order.
Sir, you were ready to take the vote. I think the council wants to...
Right, well, thank you, Mr. Slater. And thank you, Ms. McGinnis. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Motion passes. We now move to regular business. Under mayoral nominations, there are three downtown development authority appointments that expired on September 30th, 2011, and three planning commission appointments that have expired on December 31st, 2011. As far as the DDA appointments, I would like to postpone my nominations to finalize my vetting process. With regard to the nominations to the planning commission, I would like to nominate the following people: Gordon Shepke, Steve Johansson, and Steve Loken. Can we make a resolution?
This is for what?
Here goes nomination.
This is for what again?
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission.
Stand your name, turn.
Well, I would make the resolution to nominate these gentlemen that I've just noted: Gordon Shepke, Steve Johansson, and Steve Loken. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion, or do we need a vote, Mrs. Bittner? Yeah, do we have discussion?
I do.
Councilmember Campbell?
I'm not familiar with this. When we do this, do we get resumes from these people? I know, I mean, does everybody get a resume for who these nominees are?
Mrs. Bittner gets applications and resumes?
Yes, Mayor. All the resumes for all the interested applicants, as well as the current members, are, have been moved to the confidential portal for all of City Council members to view.
Okay, very good, thanks.
Councilman Slater?
I see that three members that are currently on the planning commission have asked for reappointment, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And none of these are currently on, as current members?
I want to thank each of them sincerely for the contribution that they've made to the city and their willingness to volunteer for the board. But I believe that we need new faces and some fresh ideas, and that's why I'm nominating three new citizens for these positions. Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, Mayor, I know Mr. Shepke here, but some of these others I don't know. I've not had an opportunity, I'm sorry, to vet them myself. So at this point, I need to study the resumes and the qualifications of these people compared to ones we already have that are currently serving. I understand your intention to get some new people on, but I'm not prepared to vote in these three new people without studying their resumes.
Well, this is the nomination process. We'll be voting on them in two weeks, so we'll have plenty of time to go over the resumes and vet them for the nomination.
Well...
Yes, Mayor Protem?
And my issue is similar in that we also had not only the three members that have currently served on the planning commission, and we very much appreciate their service and think that they've done a fine job, we also had additional people that had turned in applications as well, which were available to us to review. And the people that you've mentioned, unless I'm not spelling something correctly, there was nothing in here in terms of their application, so we haven't even had the chance to review those. It looks like Gordon's, Mr. Shepke's was, but the other two, there was nothing even there for us to review. So I think that that makes it difficult to even consider the new faces because we don't know anything about those people.
Well, we have two weeks for the nominating process. Yes, Councilman Teetz?
Madam Mayor, my question is, one procedure, if we were to nominate the three people tonight, doesn't that lock us in, for lack of a better word, that those three people will be the folks that we vote on in two weeks? I'm not sure who to address, which staff member?
Yes, you could vote on them, and if in the two weeks, it would seem if you didn't find their applications and resumes supporting an affirmative vote, you could vote no.
Okay, but what you're asking for is that these three people would be the only choices that we would have in two weeks, correct?
These are the three that I'm nominating, yes.
Okay. I know Mr. Shepke very well, but I don't know the other two people, and so I'm a little uncomfortable. I don't even have both their names written down. I think both of their first names are Steve. And so at this point, I feel a little uncomfortable without just postponing it two weeks. I don't think it's a maker-breaker for the city, so that's my two cents.
I'll support the postponement for two weeks myself, for the same reasons. Or I'll move to amend and nominate the three that are requesting reappointment, but I would just soon do it the other way. So I'm going to support...
Postponement?
Postponement for two weeks. And if we could get those resumes and have them appear before us next week, I'd appreciate that. That's how we've done things in the past.
The resumes were moved to the confidential portal today, when they were received.
Okay.
The resumes for those two individuals, they're on the confidential portal.
Okay.
Point of clarification, so all of these resumes arrived today?
The two gentlemen, aside from Mr. Shepke, those resumes were received today and moved to the confidential portal.
Okay, that's, I didn't see that then.
And Mr. Shepke's resume has been available for some time.
His has been moved there as well, yeah.
I'd like him to come in two weeks, though, if that would be possible. That's typically what we do.
That's fair. I'll go along with the postponement on the planning commission appointees.
Mayor, what were the other two names, so that we can go on the portal and...
Steve Johansson and Steve Loken.
Spell the last name.
L-O-K-K-E-N and J-O-H-A-N-S-S-O-N. Okay, under City Council nomination...
Mayor, you need to vote on the postponement.
Vote on the postponement?
Mm-hmm.
A vote, please.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Under the City Council nominations, we have a request from City Management to establish a historic district study committee. Could someone please bring forward that resolution?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem?
Whereas the planning department received a request from a resident to de-list a historic property, and whereas Chapter 13 Historic Preservation requires City Council to establish and appoint an ad hoc historic district study committee to process applications to de-list historic properties, therefore be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby establishes an ad hoc historic study committee of not less than three members in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 13 of the Troy City Code and MCL 399.214/1, which shall be dissolved after all pending applications are finalized.
Second?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion? Councilman Teetz?
This study committee will come into existence for the period that it's needed and then move on and disappear, I guess. Is that correct, my understanding of Troy?
Correct.
Thank you.
A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mayor Protem McGinnis, would you like to bring forward the remaining nominations?
I would. Let's see here. Resolve that Troy City Council hereby forwards the following nominated persons to serve on the boards and committees as indicated to their next regular City Council meeting for action. Nominations for historic district study committee, terming both, I'm sorry, all three positions are ad hoc in terms of their expiration dates. The first name I'm forwarding is Lorraine Campbell. The second name is Barbara Chambers, and the third name is Bruce Bloomingdale. For the election commission, where we will be appointing two people, two regular members and one charter member for one-year terms. I'm forwarding the names of David C. Anderson, the Republican, which was recommended by his party, Aileen Bittner, our city clerk, and Timothy Dewan, the person, I'm sorry, recommended by the Democratic Party. And I don't need to forward Aileen's name, do I?
No, that's okay.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's okay.
Just trying to sign you up for some more things. And for the zoning board of appeals, three-year terms. Should I go ahead and forward a name for the, as the planning commission rep, or does that then need to be placed on hold?
It would be placed on hold because the person who holds that position's planning commission term is also up for either reappointment or replacement.
So should I bifurcate the planning commission rep name that I would be forwarding from the alternates, or should we...
You could just leave it off your list of nominations.
Okay. Let's see, and I will go ahead then with the alternates. Their terms expiring April 30th of 2014. The first alternate would be Bruce Bloomingdale, and the second alternate would be Mr. Keltsounas, also for a term expiring 4/30/2014.
Okay, are there any discussions?
I'll support. I'll support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
If, I apologize, since this is the first time we've gone through this procedure, if we would like to amend one of the names on the list, how do we handle that, or what's the procedure for doing that, or is that simply...
Mrs. Bittner?
I think you can add a name.
You could, you could add a name as well to the list, and then what would happen is the next meeting, when we go for the appointments, instead of just doing a simple yes/no vote, I would roll call the names, and then you would each give your vote for the person you wanted.
Okay. I'd like to make the following amendments, or additional names, for the election com...
You're going to move it as an amendment. You would move it as an amendment to Mayor Protem's motion to nominate those people, just so you know.
Okay. I'd like to amend the motion, as it sits, to add on the election commission for vote, David Harrell, for the Republican. I'd like to add David Eisenbacher for the zoning board appeals. And, just one moment.
Support.
Are you looking for another one, Councilman Teetz?
Yes, I am. Dave Lambert for the planning commission?
No, we can't. The planning commission was postponed.
Oh, we can't, I'm sorry.
Right, right.
Okay, I apologize. That'll be all.
David Lambert is on the zoning board of appeals list. Did you want to, was that what you were thinking?
Oh...
Oh, he's already on it, isn't he?
That's correct, he's already on it.
Yeah, 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 all right.
My apologies.
All right, so moved by Councilman Teetz, seconded by Councilman Fleming. Discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, sir?
The Republican GOP recommended David Anderson, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there...
And the reasoning is, Mr. Harrell's heavily involved in the Republican Party locally, including precinct delegates and so forth, and I'm sure that the county GOP chair would also be interested in sending a letter. So we'll see by the next meeting, let things play out.
Okay.
Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner, on the amendment to the nominations.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. So now we vote on the nominations that Mayor Protem moved forward, and it was seconded by Slater. Mr. Councilman Slater, a vote, please.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda, we have a request for a closed session. Could someone please move the resolution? Well, I'll move the, be it resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268H, MCL 15.243G.
Support.
Second. Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Fleming. A vote, or discussion? Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have a resolution to approve the proposed poverty exemption guidelines.
Now, Mayor, to the closed session now?
No, we go to the closed session after the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we vote on it now, and then go there after the...
I apologize.
Session. Okay, so we're at the resolution to approve the proposed poverty exemption guidelines. Would someone like to forward the motion? Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Madam Mayor, move the resolution as printed.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Discussion? Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is a special use request and preliminary site plan revision for the proposed Kroger Retail Fuel Center, recommended for approval by the City of Troy Planning Commission at its meeting on August 9th, 2011. Would someone please move the resolution forward?
I'll move the resolution. Second.
Okay, moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion?
Presentation.
We have a presentation?
I can make a presentation if you'd like. It's up to you, Madam Mayor.
That's fine, please.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Just waiting for the slide to... Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. The site in question this evening is controlled by consent judgment, which means that the planning commission is only a recommending body, and City Council makes, actually acts on the, on the preliminary site plan and the special use request. The applicant proposes a Kroger Retail Fuel Center at an existing Kroger site. It's located at the corner, at the southwest corner of Crooks Road and South Boulevard. You see here, there's an existing Kroger here and some retail shops along the southern part of the property, and there's a relatively large parking lot in front of the, in front of the existing buildings. And you see in the corner area of the parking lot, it's generally underutilized, there's very few cars there today. The applicant proposes a fuel center that's going to include four pumps or eight fueling stations, a 125-square-foot kiosk, and a canopy over, over all of the entire operation. And they also propose some additional landscaping, and I'm going to show you a visual I think is the most effective. It's, I was given this today, and I put it on the PowerPoint, on the PowerPoint presentation, but it's just, it's a color-rendered site plan. And here you see what's proposed, again, the canopy with the, with the four pump islands underneath and 125-square-foot kiosk. I want to note that they're not proposing any additional curb cuts along either Crooks or South Boulevard, which is important because from a traffic management perspective, they're not going to be adding any additional turning conflicts to the site, which is, which is a positive. I would also note, and this is, this is a rendered elevation of what's proposed, color-rendered. I would also note that the site of the gas station is approximately three feet lower than the sidewalk that runs along both Crooks and South Boulevard, so it's already a little bit lower, and there's some existing eleva, existing landscaping there, excuse me, some shrubs and some trees, that's really going to help to kind of buffer and mask the gas, the fueling center. And here's some renderings that were provided by the applicant, and these were provided for the planning commission as well. And this is, this is the view of the, it's a conceptualized view of the gas, of the fuel center from the intersection of Crooks and South. And there's some, there's some other views here that you see, again, the landscaping and the decrease in elevation really, it helps to mask and buffer that, the development. The planning commission held a public hearing on this item, August 9th of 2011. They recommended approval of the fuel center with two conditions. Both the conditions were met on the revised site plan, they're relatively minor. One was that any, any equipment used for fire suppression be screened. Well, they're not proposing any fire suppression, so that's, that's a non-issue. And the second is that the, the application complies with our, with our lighting requirements, which it does. So it was revised, revised to meet the planning commission recommendation. And with that said, Madam Mayor and City Council, City Management recommends approval of the preliminary site plan, special use application, and the second order, amending consent judgment for the proposed Kroger Retail Fuel Center.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I think we're ready for a vote. Thank you very much. Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll now move on to the resolution regarding Tallman and Eckford Roads water main replacement. Could someone read the resolution?
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Councilman Fleming?
Resolve that addendum number one to contract number 10-5, Tallman and Eckford Water Main Replacement is hereby approved to Palmer Enterprises Incorporated, 58021, Grashit, New Haven, Michigan, 48048, at unit prices contained in the contract. The total amount authorized is $769,485.50, and includes the previous authorized amount of $641,805, 10% contingency as per the contract award resolution, and the estimated $63,500 amount for which addendum number one exceeds the 10% contingency.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Slater. Is there any discussion? Okay, no discussion. Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. We now move to the consent agenda items. Are there any consent agenda items that anyone would like to remove for discussion? No items are removed, so we need someone to bring forward the resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Teetz. Discussion? Oh, it was, I'm sorry, Councilman Campbell, you sound so...
I got to sit up in my chair.
Yeah, I apologize. Seconded by Councilman Campbell. Discussion? Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we move to council comments. Did we want to take a break before council comments by chance? Would you like to take a break? Five minutes? We'll take a break for five minutes. We'll resume at about 9:24. Please, bring the meeting back to order, please. Okay, meeting's back to order. We now move to council comments. Anyone have comments they'd like to make? Councilman Teetz?
Just a very brief comment. Tomorrow evening at 7:00 to 8:00 PM, State Representative Marty Knollberg will be holding a seminar about how to prevent fraud, retail fraud, and identity theft. It'll be over at the Troy Community Center, and I believe it's one of the large rooms next to the atrium, so hope to see you there. That'll be all.
I've been concerned about the January 17th letter that was regarding the Troy Transit Center that was written by the President of the Troy Chamber of Commerce, which states that they'll commit to working with the city to fill the gap between revenues from Amtrak and Transit Center operation expenses. I did speak with Mrs. Hodges this weekend and expressed my concerns for the Troy taxpayers. There was some agreement that she would make regular presentations to the council, and if she couldn't make it here, I would give the update for her outlining her progress on these various new business models that they're developing to generate revenues. But I think that discussions and commitments and agreements are really nice, but we operate the city on resolution and statutes. So, Mrs. Bloom, I would like for you to draft a resolution that would bind the Chamber of Commerce to the operating expenses, and I think this resolution presented this evening is a good worksheet to start with from this vantage point. Is there any other discussions on that issue?
Mayor, yes, before we move on from this one, I have not seen the resolution. I'm certainly happy to look at what the resolution is. I did not receive a copy of it, so I would just request that I receive a copy from the clerk tomorrow, and I'm sure that she will provide that to me. But, Mayor, the problem is that your resolutions really have no binding effect on the Chamber of Commerce, so I'm not sure what type of a resolution that I could do that would be binding on the Chamber of Commerce.
I would like to see a resolution asking for a binding contract signed by the Chamber of Commerce to cover the operating and maintenance cost, because that was what was relied upon to make that vote last week. So I think that's kind of important, that we have a contractual agreement to that effect.
And, Mayor, I'm certainly, if there's a majority of council that tells me to draft a contract, then I certainly will do that. I think that one of the issues that I'm going to run into, though, is I don't know what the parameters are that would be put in that agreement. So it'd be very difficult, at this point in time, to draft a contract that's going to be binding and to present to council. I'm happy to talk with Mrs. Hodges and see if there's something else that I can do as an interim step, if there's a majority that directs me to do that, but it is going to be difficult for me to proceed in that fashion.
Mayor?
I understand where we're going with that, because, you know, it was certainly one of the things that was brought up to council and the people when we voted on this last week, that, you know, all the ongoing costs would be covered. And the chamber made a very strong case in writing that they would make every effort to work with us to do that. And certainly, that was, you know, information that the people used to, you know, send us emails and documentation to say, yes, vote for this, because the Troy Chamber is going to pay for all the ongoing costs. So there has to be some way to try to put the Chamber of Commerce at least on notice that we expect everything in that letter that they indicated they were going to do coming our way.
Attorney Bloom?
Mayor, and I'm sorry, I know that there are council members. I would certainly defer to the other council members before responding.
Go ahead.
Councilman Slater?
Well, I...
I'm sorry.
It's all right. Go ahead.
Councilman Campbell?
I just wanted to correct you a little information you gave there. We didn't get that letter from the Michelle Hodges, though, just before the meeting, so I really doubt that we had many more emails before we got the letter to talk about what they were going to support us with as far as money was concerned. So I think timeline's a little goofed up there.
Mayor, if I can respond?
Yes, sir.
The Chamber of Commerce has been talking about this for weeks, that they just put the letter to us, you know, the day of the last meeting. Does not indicate how many emails I've gotten with regard to the Chamber of Commerce is going to pay for all the ongoing costs. That has been spoken about in the past.
I would also like to say that people do talk to us via different methods than just email, phone, in person, et cetera. Other comments? Councilman Teetz?
At this point, since there's no resolution before the council, and there doesn't seem to be anything written, I don't think during council comments is the time to have this conversation. You could certainly approach the attorney or take time on your own to write up a resolution if you want to bring this forward, but since we don't have anything to vote on or any action to be taken, I don't think this is the proper time to have this discussion, so...
Well, I did ask if Attorney Bloom could take a look at this resolution. I thought you had received a copy of it and draft something to this effect. That was my only recommendation. Excuse me. Councilman Slater?
Well, this isn't unexpected, and Councilman Fleming and I have had numerous discussions with Michelle Hodges about the commitment, and it did not involve a signed contract. It involved a meeting that was going to take place on March 1st. I think we should wait. We have the meeting. There's a commitment from them, there's a commitment from me, there's a commitment from staff that we're going to get this done. Now, to quickly jump to try and get a resolution to hopefully not try to circumvent the honest negotiations that have gone on with the chamber, I think we just need to wait till March 1st. Let's have a meeting. I'm going to be there. City staff's going to be there, and we're going to move this forward. And if, at some point, you don't agree with what we're doing, then I would suggest you probably try to do this. But we're going to get this done.
I'm in full support, and...
Well, you weren't in support when we took the vote, and there's four members up here that did not rely 100% on the O&M cost to make us vote yes. So I would only ask, give us till March 1st. Let us put this meeting together, and after that, I think you're going to see that this is a positive thing, and we're going to move forward with it. But I only ask till March 1st. That's when the first meeting is supposed to take place. And I'm not going to give a nod to add work to this.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. I understand the desire to put teeth into the agreement, but legally, I don't know what we can do. Our council, our city attorney's saying we may not be able to do this to make it legally binding. I'm putting a lot of trust, and my vote was putting a lot of trust in the city count, in the Chamber of Commerce and the businesses. They put it in writing. Since then, I've received a phone call, you know, from the Chamber of Commerce, reiterating they're not going to let us down. I want to see what they put as form of a business plan, working with the city management. I think we should give them time, rather than trying to put together some agreement that may not be legally binding. Give the chamber an opportunity to do what they said they were going to do. I trust that they will. And that's, you said, March 1st. I think it's going to take longer than that, but that's the first meeting they committed to, and I think it's going to take longer than that to finalize any business plan. They agreed to quarterly updates to the council, and I recall that from the letter. But yes, I agree, that letter is not legally binding. That letter we voted on and predicated our vote on was based upon trust, and we've got that in writing from Michelle Hodges and from a number of businesses that were referenced in there, and I trust they're not going to let us down. And I'm optimistic they're not going to let us down. But we will wait to see what they present. I'm not ready to... But I understand the need and people being cautious about it, but I'm not sure we're in a position to do that.
And I'm in agreement with the great president that said, "Trust but verify."
I understand.
That's all I'm trying to do. Madam Mayor. Yes.
Two things on that issue, and then I have something else I wanted to bring up as well, but just to wrap up this conversation. I do think it's appropriate time for you to bring up something like this in terms of a resolution, because we are all operating under the assumption that I think we have to give direction to staff. So if there's something like this where we want the city attorney to spend time on it, or something like this that we want the city manager or some other department head to spend time on an issue, I think it's appropriate that you do bring it out in council comments, and then you can ask for us to give direction, so that there's clear direction given when we're in the public meeting, when we're in the public meeting, so that staff knows what they're supposed to be doing in terms of getting direction from all of council as opposed to one person. So I think that this is the appropriate time to do what you're doing. At this point, I'm not ready to nod my head and give that direction in terms of trying to make a resolution that will essentially lead to some sort of binding contract. I think what we're trying to do here is build a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, maybe in a way that we have not yet been able to do. And I think what we've done thus far to get everyone to the table and kind of lay out what they plan on doing, and looking for other people in the community to get on board as we move through this process to cover the operating and maintenance, figuring exactly how we're going to cover those expenses, I think it's important that we do what's necessary to kind of nurture those partnerships. So at this point, I'm comfortable with what they've given to us in terms of their meeting plan, their reporting plan to council. We have to build this still, so I know that what they brought to the table here was their pledge to us that this is what they planned to do, but we do need to give them some time to put together the partnerships and do the brainstorming and get those ideas to us. So at this point, I'm comfortable with the timeline that they've given us, and I'm not ready to nod my head towards a resolution.
Mayor, I think it is premature for a resolution as well, and if for no other reason than the fact that there's no way they would sign it at this stage of the game. So I don't care how much time we put into it and how much teeth we try to put into it, it's unlikely that we're going to have a two-sided agreement that both parties are going to sign. So, you know, to council's point, you know, give them a little bit of time, let's see a solid plan, but I certainly wouldn't want to drag it out past March 1st or shortly thereafter once they've committed to the time that they put in the letter.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilman Slater?
Go ahead.
I guess we're talking about letters, so I think it's important that we bring up your January 7th letter to us and your speech, and I think we all received a response from Mr. Zerlag today, this afternoon, and I don't know if Mr. Zerlag wants to say anything about that letter tonight. I don't want to... I don't want to put you on the spot, but there are some points that I'd like to bring up about your response. I appreciate your response. Excuse my voice, but I think it was necessary to have a written response to what you said that night. I know I wrote you a letter. I don't, I assume you got it. I haven't heard from you about the letter. And I want to thank Mr. Zerlag for writing a letter and taking the time to do that and not giving a quick response tonight that those comments were made. So if there's something you want to say, I just have a couple of points that I'd like to make about your response, too.
I would just as soon have the letter I had written speak for itself, but thanks for the opportunity.
Okay. One of the areas in your letter indicated that you didn't want your mail opened anymore.
Yes, sir.
And I respect that, but I think it's something that we needed to discuss at the study session when we talk about the rules, because if you delay opening some mail, it could have some ramifications on things that could get not done in a timely fashion with the city. And I know in the past, all, every mayor had the city open their mail to see if there were anything time-sensitive in that mail. So I would hope you may want to revisit that thinking, and maybe we can discuss it at our study session, see if maybe we want to put that in the rules, so we don't jeopardize anything that's going on with timely mail that needs to go to the city.
Councilman Slater, I discussed that with Attorney Bloom, and she indicated to me that if I picked up my mail once a week, that should be sufficient. There wasn't anything that we would receive that would require more timely attention than that, so that's certainly something that I can do.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think at this point, we'll let the letter speak for itself, and we'll review it maybe next time. Thanks.
All right. Very good. Mayor Proton McGinnis?
I just wanted to point out as well, I know that we all received it today, and it was later this afternoon, so I don't know...
I agree with you.
So I don't know if everyone's had an opportunity to review it, but I did want to point out as well, just as you took the time to put your thoughts into words and provide them to us, I think it was important, just kind of based on the content, that some of the issues were addressed and that this written response came from the city manager. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of it, and if there are some issues that are listed in here that we want to have further discussion on, I think that we should do that, and if today's not the appropriate time, then after everyone's had an opportunity to review it, then we could bring it back to council comments and discuss. There were a couple of things in here about the mail, which was something I had an issue with, and it sounds like you've already addressed that. And I think, you know, just hearing that that's going to be the procedure is maybe all that we needed to hear, and that's fine, but there were some other issues in here regarding FOIA and OMA, Open Meetings Act. So if there's additional discussion that we need to have as a council about that at a later date, hopefully everyone will have a chance to read this, and we can talk about it then, so...
I'm also very pleased that Manager Zerlag has put more information in writing so that we can review and study the issues and have a full complement of information available to us, so I thank you very much for that as well. Any other comments? Now is the time for the closed session. So...
There's a study item.
A study item is before that? Okay. The study item is the lawsuit, the...
No, it's Public Act 152 of 2011. It has to do with...
Oh, I'm sorry. Here it is. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. The study item on the agenda is to discuss the Publicly Funded Healthcare Insurance Contributions Act, which is Public Act 152 of 2011, and discuss the various options available to us for our own city employees. Are we going to reconvene to the boardroom?
Madam Mayor, may...
Yes, sir.
I've looked into this, I'm the one that asked for the study session. I've looked into this more, and in the memo outlined here, it asks about potential legal employment implications of these decisions, and that the management suggests that we have, or suggested we have a closed session discussion with our retained labor counsel, Craig Lang, at some time in the future. I think that makes sense when we're talking about these issues. It's serious stuff, and I think of it as a measure twice, cut once sort of issue, so I'd encourage the council to be willing to postpone it. I don't know when a good date would be, and I defer to the management as far as suggesting a date that would make sense with Mr. Lang's schedule.
Mr. Zerlag, wouldn't it be important for us to have a study session so that we have the issue on the table with the public awareness of what's going on, and then have the closed session meeting that would be required afterwards?
That would be up to the governing body. On December 14th, we had essentially a history of what happened with our classified and exempt personnel in terms of the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contributions Act. We spoke about concessions that were given essentially for about the past two and a half years. We spoke about the requirement by the state of Michigan to have a public body take one of three options. It was either to opt out, which essentially would have the municipality determine by a majority, supermajority vote of the council on how to handle health insurance. It would be what was called a hard cap, where there was a set threshold, and any amount above that threshold, as determined by the state of Michigan, would be borne by the employee. And then it was what was called the 80/20 rule, whereby the employer would pay 80% of the cost, and the employee would pay 20%. would pay 20% of the cost. In that letter of December 14th, we had mentioned that because of concessions that were previously given and have had a reduction in health insurance coverage per se, that our employees are under the hard cap provision in terms of the employer cost, and so that we comply with that one requirement, that one of three requirements by the state of Michigan. And that said, there was no need for council to take action on the hard cap issue. If council wanted to look at the other options and study them, I was asked to come back with further information, and in the course of discussion, and council member Teetz did call me, and we spoke about the possibility of having an executive session to discuss some employment ramifications of this. But the letter's up, is public now. It's in January 19th as well as December 14th. Essentially, it's the classified and exempt personnel that we're talking about, of which there are 83 people. 61 are covered by the city's health insurance plan. 22 are net. And that's essentially what we have to, or what you have to decide. As a point in fact, we're already in compliance again with the hard cap. We've already received our federal revenue, our state revenue sharing, because we comply with the, that act.
Councilman Slater?
I know what we would discuss in the executive session, and I think it would be very important to have this new council here that, and it may make more sense, to have that before you have your study session, in my opinion. So I think if we could quickly get an executive session and bring in Mr. Lang, it would, I think it would help you, and then we can have a study session, and that seems to be the way that it would make more sense to me. I think we need the study session so the public sees what's going on, but I think if we had the executive session first, it would make more sense to everybody, rather than reverse.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Teetz?
All of our discussions in the study session will obviously be open and, you know, be completely in front of the public. However, I think with all issues that involve labor, I think there are certain things that we're unable to discuss necessarily in public as well. So that's why I'd ask for a postponement, and I don't know what date or what time Mr. Lang has available where he could address the council.
If I may, Mr. Lang has available the next two council meetings, so if council wants to select one of those dates, I'll make sure he's in attendance. That would be February 6th, I think, and the 20th, if I'm not mistaken?
February 6th, yeah, and then the 20th.
We have a study session on the 6th.
We have this rules of procedure study session.
It'll take a while.
Yeah, yeah.
How about the 20th for Mr. Lang?
The 20th. Well, one of the considerations that I noticed in the study session is that this is really going to impact only a small group of employees, whereas in, what is it, April of 2013, then all of the other employees' contracts are going to be open, and then it might be more consistent to look at it even at that point, wouldn't it?
That would be my recommendation, would be to look at it upon expiration. It's not all the collective bargaining agreements that expire, but I know at least one does, and that's Ask Me, and that has about 100 members.
So that would seem consistent with our decision to have a closed session on the 20th of February. We'd certainly have enough time.
Also advise the labor attorney, if the balance of councils are in concurrence with that.
Okay, so we move for a postponement. Councilwoman Teetz moved for a postponement. Councilman Slater seconded it. Any discussion? Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Pass. Motion passes. We have a closed session on the 20th. And now we also have a closed session today, and now we're at the time where we're going to move to the closed session. Do I bang the gavel, Mrs. Bittner?
Yes, you're going to have recess.
Call a recess for closed session?